To call the meeting for the Harwich Select Board on Monday, July 21st to order. Accept motion to go into executive session?
Second.
No, you have to make the motion.
I move that we go into executive session for number A, for letter A pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 38, 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, the open meeting law of Mass. General laws, Chapter 38, 22f, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated May 12th, 2025, June 16th, 2025, June 23rd, 2025, June 30th, 2025, and July 14th, 2025. B pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions and non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. C pursuant to General laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Acting Town Administrator. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I will note before we take a vote that we will not be back any earlier than 6:00 PM into the public session, but we will be returning to the public session. So with that, all in favor? Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's four zero. Select Board meeting for July 21st, 2025, back into session. Previously, we were in executive session. We approved all the minutes that were listed in your agenda, but we have not approved them to be released as there is still ongoing executive session implications to them. We did approve a pay adjustment for the Assistant Town Administrator, who is now the Acting Town Administrator. We negotiated an equitable change in her pay to reflect the extra responsibility. And the other contract negotiations are ongoing and cannot be divulged. So I ask you to join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Do you have any staff comments?
I do have our vacancy list, our committee vacancy list as of July 15th. We have vacancies in the Board of Appeals. Three alternates are in need on the Board of Appeals. One full member on the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, two on the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, one on Capital Outlay Committee, one on Community Preservation Committee. We need two full and two alternates on the Conservation Commission, one Cultural Council vacancy, two golf committees, one Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee, three, one full and two alternate on the Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee. We have one opening on the Harwich Housing Committee, two for the Historic District and Historical Commission. That's one full and one alternate. Two alternates on the Planning Board, one for Recreation and Youth Commission, one full and two alternates on the Treasure Chest Committee, two full and one alternate on the Waterways Committee, four full and one alternate on the Youth Services Committee. Citizens Committee vacancy forms are available on our website, and they can also be provided at the Administration Office. And if anyone is interested in volunteering for the town, we would welcome you to apply.
Okay, I don't think we ever had.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Are these vacancies higher than normal? Are we running a?
No, we usually have vacancies. What is out of the ordinary is the Conservation Commission having two full and two alternates. And then the Board of Appeals, right now, we have the 40B application, and needing those three alternates is something that we would really like to fill so we don't have any qualm issues. But having a variety of vacancies is not uncommon.
Just one other thing, Mr. Chair, if I may. In the fall, do we ever have like an appreciation day for volunteers, like a?
We are looking into it over the last couple of weeks. We spoke about that. Yeah, we'd like to do one in mid-September.
I think it would be a great idea to just to show for all the time they put in without pay. We're highly paid, they're not.
Is that hardly or highly? I would like to just tag on to that, though. The town, as many towns do, this town relies heavily on volunteers to be able to do the work in the town. Even the regulatory bodies, though, don't require you to have a special degree or any kind of special training. We can give you the training when you get here, but the real trick with these regulatory filings is the law says one thing, but it asks for a citizen review of that within the confines of the law. If it was so apparent that whatever you submit is right or wrong, then it would just go to a staff person, it would be accepted or rejected. We operate so that we've got five regulatory boards, and they are extremely important, Conservation, Planning, ZBA. And it's not a daunting thing. If you want to volunteer for it, we'll help you train along and get you to the point where you're fully capable of doing anything that we request of you, because all we really want is your honest judgment. So with that, any other? Okay, so weekly briefing then.
Unfortunately, the same weekly briefing for the sewer extension is from last week, the narrative. However, they did provide us with a new timeline projection that goes a little bit farther. But we are still on Bay Road, Old Garage Drive, Charlene Lane, and working in the Standish Woods area for both the pump station and sewer in the roads. So that's the sewer weekly briefing. Is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, for those of you who have nothing better to do during the week but rummage through the agenda packets, you will note that we are sending in four particular things that are recurring into the agenda packets, and that was one of them. It's not that, it's inadvertent. What we're trying to do is keep focused on things that have key objectives so that we don't fall behind on them. And one of them is that, one of them is closing of Brooks and Finance, which he promised roughly around now, so we got to make sure that where we are relative to that for next week's meeting.
Okay.
Brooks Academy is another one that we're still on target.
And that there's an agenda item for Brooks Academy Museum, so I can speak to that when it comes up.
But again, even if there's not, we're going to be seeing that every week, so we're paying attention to where the timelines are, if we're falling behind or if we're on target. And finally, there's Sewer 3A, which we're going to have discussion about relative to the easements, but that's also there, and you will be seeing it there every week until we finish. So, public comments and announcements. The entire public is silent right now. All right, so move on to presentation. Presentation by the Community Action Plan by Crescendo Consulting.
Good evening.
You don't look like Crescendo.
No, I'm not. Good evening, Carrie Sherner, Health Director for the Town of Harwich, just introducing Nicole Hallis from Crescendo Consulting. She's online. The Community Action Plan was funded through the opioid abatement funds. It was a plan created to help guide local decision-making in Harwich. The project aims to identify practical steps that can be taken over time and with the right partnerships to improve the quality of life of the residents of Harwich. I'm going to hand it off to Nicole now to just take you through the action plan, and I'll be here if you have any questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Could I please? Oh, thank you, somebody gave me permission to share, I appreciate it. So you should be looking at a presentation right now. If you're not, please shout at me. All right, good evening, everyone. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. As Carrie mentioned, my name is Nicole Hallis. I'm a Research Manager with Crescendo Consulting Group, and I've been working with the Harwich Health Department and other local partners to help pull together what we're calling this Community Action Plan. So I'm going to walk you through this evening really quick, is just a background of why and how this plan was created, options that are going forward, some highlights of the plan itself, and I'll finish off talking about why this is so important and some potential next steps. So first of all, why was this plan created? Well, last year, the lower Cape towns of Brewster, Chatham, Harwich, and Orleans came together to conduct a community health needs assessment that really served to shed light on shared concerns in the region or what the problems are according to the community. In Harwich, the Health Department wanted to take that regional data and drill down to figure out the how in addressing those problems, because it's all well and good to know what the problems are, but the goal of this plan is to figure out how to actually go about doing something about it. For that reason, the plan is focused on concrete action items, not just ideas, to serve as a starting point to guide that work. So over the last few months, we gathered input from a range of town staff, local organizations, and community partners, including a working group that met regularly with folks from across Harwich to provide input in real time. Incorporating this boots-on-the-ground input meant that this action plan we've developed really reflects a deep understanding of the community and how it's currently functioning. And I just want to stress, our focus wasn't on reinventing the wheel. It was really about capturing what's already happening that works well, what could be expanded on, where there are gaps, and importantly, what actions are within reach. We did not go into this action plan trying to solve the nationwide housing crisis or reforming health insurance. These are mostly basic actions that speak to everyday needs like healthcare, transportation, childcare, and they work within the scope of what the town and region are already capable of. So keeping that in mind, if the town does choose to pursue any of the ideas in this plan, there are a few common ways to get started, and these came directly from funding notes and planning conversations, which again, were grounded in reality. To make sure these actions are attainable, we designed actions in this plan around some basic principles. First is to leverage what's already working, either in Harwich or nearby towns, not starting from scratch. If there's a program or something that's working, could be expanded, those were where we focused our action items. Another is to apply for available funding through programs like the Public Health Excellence Grant, opioid settlement dollars, or even federal grants. While many of these actions have a monetary component, the plan does not suggest that everything has to come from the municipal budget. And in many cases, there's a chance to stretch town resources creatively, using interns, shared staff, or regional collaboration to help keep costs down. And for bigger initiatives, and there are some of those in this plan, it's perfectly okay to phase things in over time, starting with a small pilot or planning effort. So we needed to figure out how to organize this action plan to address community needs in a way that really made those actions digestible. We know what the needs are, but then needed to figure out how to address them. To do that, the plan is divided into three sections with a focus on feasibility. So the first section is some foundational ideas for townwide infrastructure and coordination, actions that touch on multiple needs and could solve issues across several of those need categories. Then there are immediate action priorities centered on needs that are having the biggest impact in the community but are the easiest to address, mostly lower-cost actions with short-term options that could be pursued over the next one to three years. And then there are more transformational initiatives, which focus on needs that will require longer-term plans that take more time funding or partnership. Think things like housing, that they're not going to be solved in one to three years. So I'll start with what we're calling, you know, this is more of the groundwork, so small relatively low-cost steps that can make a big difference across several of these areas of need. We heard that Harwich already has a lot of resources, but residents don't always know where to go or who to ask. One option is just to improve how departments share information with townspeople, like using print flyers, clearer signage, or helping residents sign up for email alerts. Another is pulling together a basic resource guide, something simple that lists services already available in town. And having a small resource corner in a central location with brochures or someone to talk to could go a long way. Those are all relatively easy to implement, using current staff, interns, volunteers. They also set the stage for future efforts, like eventually exploring whether more coordination across departments within a unified Health and Human Services Department might reduce silos. That's a longer-term idea, but certainly one to keep on the radar. And next in our action plan, we have these immediate action priorities. So these are things that could move forward in the next one to three years or so, often using what's already in place, touching on things like mental health, access to healthcare, disease prevention. So to give you an example of something that's in this plan is the Council on Aging's Volunteer Driver Program is working well, but there may be room to expand it with more community outreach. Similarly, the shared mental health navigator role with Chatham already exists, so there's potential to make fuller use of that position to address some of those mental health needs in the community. Again, low-cost options, building on strengths that Harwich already has. Some other areas in this, in this plan, public health education, substance use and opioid outreach, and food insecurity. So a few other short-term ideas that came up to address some of those areas are partnering with both the Barnstable County or the VNA to bring mobile screenings and vaccine clinics to familiar places, continuing youth-focused health education in schools, using materials and funding that already exist, maintaining partnerships with the Family Table Collaborative, and growing the People's Garden, already initiatives that have strong momentum. And on the opioid front, strengthening harm reduction efforts and educational outreach that's already underway. Again, these are manageable ideas to address some of these need areas, most with minimal additional funding if they're built into existing work or coordinated with partners. Then looking at some of those more transformational initiatives, like I mentioned, housing, childcare, jobs, and cost of living, those are definitely bigger-picture needs that they will require more time, coordination, and potentially outside funding to address them. So for example, sharing clearer housing information or expanding emergency rental support could be helpful in addressing some of those housing needs. There's also potential to promote the town's preschool subsidy program and to look at whether neighboring towns might work together to increase infant and toddler care. And with the rising cost of living, there's interest in just using available data to create a simple cost-of-living snapshot to help residents understand what it really costs to live here. Again, that's a low-budget item that could help shed light on the real challenges people are facing. And then when completing the needs assessment last year, we heard that transportation is a barrier for a lot of people, especially older adults and folks who need to get to medical appointments in other towns. A few simple ideas came up here, like supporting driver's ed for teens and exploring regional ride options, maybe in partnership with nearby towns or providers. And on the youth side, we heard last year that programming for youth can be a bit limited. But before jumping into any solutions, one low-cost place to start in our action plan is just ask students directly what they want. A short survey could help make sure any future programs are really targeted to their interests. These are all options just to keep in mind, nothing to happen overnight, but ideas to lay the groundwork for future planning. And it's worth pointing out here that many of these needs are all connected. Food access ties into health, healthcare ties into disease prevention, housing ties into mental health, transportation affects just about everything, getting to appointments, getting to work, getting your child childcare. So even a small improvement in one area taking on some of these actions can have a ripple effect on others. That's why this plan that we've created is meant to be flexible. The town doesn't have to take it all on, we're not expecting all of these needs to be fixed overnight. It's just a roadmap for what's possible, and it's okay to start small, addressing one issue at a time and seeing how those ripples fan out. And as a final note here, this plan is not meant to be a checklist or a mandate. As I said, no one is expecting all of these actions to be taken on all at once. It's just a starting point, a collection of ideas and options that can serve as a shared tool to help guide conversations. The town can choose what feels realistic, what fits with current priorities, and where there's momentum or existing support. That might mean starting small, like just sharing information in a new way or trying out a pilot program. This action plan is meant to support the work that's being done, not to add to the burden. And it's flexible, it can evolve over time based on what works, what the community needs. And I'd also like to add that a lot of times when a community undertakes a community health needs assessment, that work often sits on a shelf and no one bothers to do anything more with it. They figure out what's going on, but then they don't actually take the next step into action. So the fact that Harwich now has this roadmap, it's a really important step in trying to help the community where it needs it the most. So thank you again so much for all of your time and for the work that you're doing to help your community on a daily basis.
Okay. Do you have an epilogue or do you want to go into questions?
No, I didn't know if you had any questions for myself or Nicole based on the?
I do not either, so let's ask. Jeff, you have anything?
I'm going to think of a couple here, so I'll go a little later if I could.
Mark?
Great, great presentation, though.
Sure. Carrie, thank you for coordinating this. We filled out a survey on this, this is where a lot of the data came, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, so for the needs assessment, that was, we had the survey for that, and then this was more departments and community partners that we reached out to, a lot of local organizations that we work with frequently, VNA, Aid Support Group, organizations like that. But the survey went to the needs assessment that we conducted last year.
Yeah. If you had some immediate needs, a low-hanging fruit, what would be your first two or three priorities that we could perhaps help you with? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so I think cataloging our resources and getting them all in one cohesive document or place where people can find them easy. When people are in crisis, they don't always want a Google search and thumb through, they want people to know where to turn. We do have our DPH intern that we got for the summer, working on an opioid resource guide, something to guide families through, and then also individuals struggling. So some of the resource guides we're already starting to work on, but I think that would be the first attack. We just might need, you know, some help compiling where those resources live, you know, working with other departments, some time for that. So I think that's something easy enough that we can tackle with the resources we have. Some of the other ones, like food insecurity that we're working on, supporting our garden and our fridge program, is something that we're diligently working on the last couple of seasons. That's coming together nicely. But just getting us connected with the powers that be. We brought the needs assessment up to the Barnstable County Commissioners and the Assembly Delegates, and it was kind of, you know, here's the information, here's where it lies, but it doesn't really go anywhere, so.
One term I didn't get, SmartDart access, what's that?
So the SmartDart is a bus service that the RTA offers, and it's like a pickup, they'll pick you up at your house and take you to specific locations.
And one last thing, vaccine clinics in schools, is that to bring the public in or is that, don't kids, don't students already have vaccine? Well, no, not really. They get them outside of school and the school verifies it.
Yep, school verifies if there's a flu that's needed or updated COVID that's needed. We can bring those into the school systems, or if there's a new student who is not current on vaccines, you know, just getting them the resources that they need. Again, it's one of those things for new students, they might not know where to turn in a new community, so just making sure the information's available for people.
So the schools could call you, and do you administer vaccines?
No, we would bring the VNA in or Barnstable County nurses in.
All right, that's a great resource.
Which we've done in the past.
Yeah, all right, thank you so much. Anita?
No, I don't have any questions at all, sorry. But thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative, and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Yeah, check out the full action plan, it'll be available on our website, so, and it's in your packet, so read through it, there's a lot of great information in there. And if you haven't read the needs assessment yet, there's some good information in that as well.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate the presentation. You know, I think, and Mark brought it forward, but to what you already mentioned, streamlining, you know, where information can be housed and accessible to folks is probably the most important piece of this, so that they know what resources are available and how to gain access to them. But going through the presentation and hearing it again this evening, I'm happy to know that we offer several of the items that have been identified already, and sure, there's more work that can be done, and perhaps, again, making them easier for folks to access or identify would be great, but the fact that we offer so many of these programs that ultimately could be enhanced is a positive sign for us, so thank you for that.
Jeff?
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
I just have, sorry, Carrie, one more question. There was some mention about cost-sharing with Chatham. Is that existing now?
So we have our Recovery Coach through Outer Cape Health, which is a, we pay a one-third position, Chatham pays a one-third, and I believe the Town of Orleans pays a one-third. But we would like to explore other potential funding opportunities to maybe get more services that are a regional approach with the whole lower Cape, like getting a lower Cape public health nurse that could, you know, spend a little bit of time in each community and get some more prevention programs in place.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, I think that's something we need to explore with other boards and towns, is how do you combine services? Say like, for example, Shellfish Constable for Pleasant Bay, Chatham has a lot of Shellfish Constables. How do we do the mechanics of sharing services, working it out? I think we just, I don't know if you have done that before, but how we work that out and make it, you know, make it so it's easy to work, you know, the sharing of costs and stuff like that, so just for future discussion to be considered.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Carrie, for being here, and great, great presentation. Mark asked a couple of my questions, I only have really two. How was the participation in the survey?
When we did the needs assessment, we didn't have as many as we liked. I think, Nicole, I don't know if you still have that data access to you right now, but I think we had about 30 in the Town of Harwich and just over 200 altogether.
Yeah, which is truly my concern, is the surveys are notoriously shy, right? I mean, they, they don't really paint the true gravity of the picture for a lot of different reasons, multivariable. And as I've said to you in the past, you know, the mental health crisis is the most wildly underserved aspect of our healthcare system. You know, and I like the regional approach, I'd like to explore a little bit, a little bit better there. And then your grid, everything does, it's something that popped into my head while I was looking at it, and she mentioned it online there, is that everything really is connected.
It really is.
And I view mental health being really right in the middle of most of it in some capacity. So, you know, I would love to try to find a way, and I don't know if this board would be interested in helping, or even if we could, but increasing the numbers on the surveys so that we could really get a more robust picture of what's really happening in our town. So that would be my two cents, is maybe we could come up with a way and work with you guys to figure out a way that we could get a larger pool of people being part of the survey. And I know Joyce and the local planning committee really did a heck of a job with the survey, I think they were like at 34, 35% of the town or something like that participated. So, you know, who knows?
Yep. I would love more participation when we do things as well. We are planning a community forum to talk about the opioid use and see what the community wants this fall, so we're hoping to get some participation with that, and we could put some surveys out with that.
It's a high bar, because when I've been involved in medical surveys, it's really hard to get people to come forward and be part of it, so. But thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
I have a few things, but most of these are ongoing. The first one, I just want to lay down the basis for the whole discussion. This is not a vast sum of riches that's ongoing that we will have forever, correct?
Correct.
So we probably really need to focus on those things, once we get going, that we can sustain within our own abilities. Here's, this isn't going to be happening as an open-ended funding source.
Correct, yep. It will eventually taper off.
Which leads me to the second problem, because there's an awful lot of things that have happened, and it's, this has been a great endeavor, but there's an awful lot of things that have happened in this town over the last 25 or 30 years that sound eerily like the same old things that we've already discussed as identifying needs. We had arguably more assets to rely on 20 years ago for kids. There was a youth chaplain, there was a youth counselor, we had a DARE program, we had the resource officers in the school. It's a concern to me, not only with that, but when we started, we were actually recognizing that it's, the buses left the bus station if you are dealing with kids as sophomores in high school, because the intervention that would be preventative would largely be mostly middle school, maybe not even that anymore. So that's one thought, because we need to have some sort of sustainable strategy. I'm just gonna lay it out there, that Cape in general has lousy support for psychological problems, especially for adolescents and minors in general. It's daunting, and we can't do anything about that ourselves. There's just, that's the way this is. Likely, even if you do have resources, you're looking at a month, maybe two months, to be able to even enter the office of somebody who could begin to help you. So I'm a little concerned about that, because that's an ongoing problem. But then you also have two other problems that are going on, and they're not coincident with each other. The opioid abuse problem of seniors is driven entirely different way than with kids. A lot of the seniors, even if you educated them, got into it because they had a surgery of some sort, and then found themselves taking more and more and more and more painkillers, and they find, as they look themselves in a mirror, that they're not looking at somebody that they even recognize anymore because they didn't expect to get into drug use. I'm not even sure how we deal with that, because that's something that most people don't want to even admit to.
We gotta break down the stigma.
Yeah.
We gotta start some community discussions. We gotta end the stigma.
And as far as kids go, I love the idea about recognizing that transportation is a real problem, but you also have to recognize, because I was in that business, I worked for AAA, nobody gives any kind of scholarships. Nauset has a driver's ed program where they fund it within the school. We don't do that anywhere else. So it's pretty expensive. You're looking at about $1,000 to get into driver's ed training. There is a structure with that, that's the good news, because if you actually make this so it's inaccessible, those who are probably most in need of having that instruction are the ones who aren't getting it, because they just simply can't afford it. There isn't even a discount in most of these driving schools.
No, I don't think there is.
And about, about $1,000 is like real money.
It's a lot for, yeah, a lot of people.
So I think that everybody needs to understand a lot of these things, because when this money goes away, the problem's not going away. So we need to come up with some strategies that are sustainable within the confines of our existing structures.
Yep. And we are definitely exploring other avenues for tackling some of these things, for grant funding, so we want to explore different grants. The opioid funding is not necessarily something we plan on putting towards this, but it could, it could, in some areas, help. We looked at the town of Plymouth, or not Plymouth, Falmouth, which has a grant that they offer through their opioid funding, so they do large grants and small grants. So the businesses and organizations that want the larger grants, they get more funding, but then they do small individualized grants where, you know, if somebody needs transportation or if they need six months of sober living, you know, they will put that money up. So something we're starting to explore with that funding and see how we can utilize that and get it where it needs to be better.
I'd like to end with a more positive note, from what I was saying. I really appreciate the effort that you folks have put into this, and everybody needs to have the recognition, you can't solve a problem if you refuse to acknowledge it. So this is a real big help.
Well, this was definitely a group effort, and I have a lot of departments to thank that contributed with this, so.
And we offer our thanks to all of them also.
And Council on Aging, the Housing Advocate, everybody played a huge role in this, so I'm grateful.
Mr. Chair, could I have one more? Speaking about the funding and all that, I know there was, there was a big, I guess, inquiry into communities that weren't spending these funds, correct? You know, I don't know if it was three, six, nine months ago. I believe it was a couple of news stations that picked up on it. Not putting you on the spot, do you have any idea where we are percentage-wise in the funds that you received to the funds that have been expended? We didn't make the naughty list, so we must be doing okay.
No, we, over the last couple of years, I believe we've received close to $300,000. It's not what we were expected to receive. We kind of got large dumps full of it, and I think we've spent about $80,000 of that, so without just pulling numbers, without having the research done. The way they distribute the funds doesn't make it easy to spend, because we don't know when it's coming, we don't know what we're getting. They could give us a few years all at once, they could get, you know, so like even the funds that we have, we're trying to be a little frugal with, so we don't put ourselves out, you know, anticipating that this is supposed to be given to us 15 years from now, but we're getting it, getting it all now. So we don't want to run out of money for the good programs that we're, we have, like that Recovery Coach program through Outer Cape is a really great program. So we want to be able to continue to fund that as long as we can.
And I think that's a prudent plan. I was not trying to suggest otherwise, so.
No, no.
Yeah, agreed, agreed, so. But I just recall that there were, and I don't, I don't remember the numbers now, but there were several communities that were 0% haven't spent a penny of that money, and I feel like a disservice.
And I can get that information to Megan for you.
No, I'm good with that rough number, so I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming in, and I don't want it to be a one-off. If you need any help, or you need any assistance as you proceed to try to implement this, please let us know and come back.
We will do that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. All righty. We're on to the, we're on to the consent agreement. You want me to make the motion so you can say yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to appoint election workers from names submitted by the Harwich Democratic and Republican Town Committees.
Second. Okay, so moving second to appoint the election workers from the list submitted by the Harwich Democratic and Republican Town Committees. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve this select board meeting minutes from July 14, 2025.
As written?
Second.
As written.
Yeah, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right, there's a request that we have for a one-day liquor license, all alcohol for the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance, for an event to be held on August 2, 2025. You want to make a motion?
Sure, I make, Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a special permit application for one-day entertainment and one-day liquor license, all alcohol for Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance for an event to be held on August 2, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 100 Oak Street.
Second.
It's ruled and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. Megan, is that inside or outside?
They have a tent.
Oh, they have a tent, okay.
It's outside under a tent.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to approve a new common vittular's license.
Vittler.
What's that?
Vittler.
Vittler. We move to vote to approve a new common vittular license application for Bagel Hound Incorporated doing business as Bagel Hound 297 Route 28.
I'll second that, I think.
Apparently you didn't watch any westerns when you were growing up. Okay, it's been, I have a question. It's, it's a serious one. They're the business that just opened up recently?
They are.
Has there been a previous vittler's license granted?
No, there has not.
Thought I'd at least bring that up.
We are approving it after the fact. They have been, they have been operating.
That's what I kind of thought. How long, did we actually have to go to them, or do they recognize, whoops?
We had to go to them.
Okay.
Just along those same lines, so I was gonna ask, it looks like it came in on July 11th, this document? I'm reading the top right corner of it correctly? Or is that one of the scanned into this? I don't know. It's the top right.
That is the doc you signed when everything was signed by all of the departments.
Thank you. So do we know what the date was that we received it?
So I received it via email on July 8th. Told him he needed to drop off paper applications, so I'm going to assume the next day.
Okay. Around the 8th or 9th, okay. And was there an explanation as to why it was not submitted?
There was not.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, I think the unspoken thought here is to express our displeasure that you could get as far as opening a place and not have the explicit authority to open the place. I think in general, as long as I'm speaking out to TV land, if anybody wants to operate a business, if it requires a special license of any sort, I don't care whether it's a junk dealer license, a car sales license, vittler's license, alcohol, they have to follow the same rules everybody else does, otherwise it would be chaotic, very chaotic. So I would like you to kind of express to them our displeasure that they went this far. But that having been said, we've got a motion to approve the vittler's license. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. This is on here because it was, I'm trying not to spend extra time as I explain this to Megan. A lot of things that we've done in the past have been sequential. We do this, then we do this as a follow-on, and we are gonna, we are going to probably need the administrators' screening committee regardless of whether we award this contractor, this company that was presented to us last week, or it's somebody else, that discussion's gonna come up. So what it is, how it looks, how it gets populated, I think is an appropriate discussion to have now. There isn't necessarily an urgency to populate it, but there's a lot of ways of going. I'll just kick it off by saying my own personal preferences, if we're gonna do it, say, five people, then each one of us winds up with their own pick, and unless there's something egregious about that pick, it'll represent a divergence of opinion then, because each one of us isn't exactly like the others. So Jeff would have a pick, you, Mark would have a pick, I'd have a pick. And the screening committee, as I would hope to envision, it would be populated that way, but it could be populated any way, it could be any size, so let's kick off the discussion. Where do you want this to go?
I would like to have at least one, one appointee from every member of this board to the selection committee. I think that that has worked in the past. I've seen it work in the past. One, every member of the board has appointed at least one person. But that's just, that would be my feeling.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, have a...
Sure, Mark.
You know, versus us choosing individually, we could all get a very similar choices. I would suggest that we look at categories. For example, have somebody come who may be a public employee. Have somebody come who may be in human services. Have an elderly person who lives in town on a fixed income. Have a fiscal conservative who may ask. So what I'm saying is, if we, if we individually choose that person, we may not get that diversity that if we categorize, you know, categorize it like, you know, public employees, as I said, an elderly person on a fixed income, just to get a wide divergence of different interests in town, that's something I would think should be considered.
Okay. But by the way, I'm not saying that, what I was saying would preclude that, because it doesn't have to top out at five. It could be seven, it could be nine. I would argue that beyond that, it becomes cumbersome to have a committee that's really big. It should be an odd number. But Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I've thought about this quite a bit, and I go back and forth. I think having each member of the board choose works for me. I think maybe then, this board could then deliberate on two more people that we all think would be a good...
That's the way he described it.
Kind of, kind of the way, like a hybrid of what Mark's saying, so we don't just all have one pick, and then that's it. To your point, which I agree 100% with, you get above seven, in my opinion, it becomes a little bit, a little bit cumbersome. But, you know, I, I think this board represents a pretty good cross-section of what Harwich is all about, and we could probably all come up with a solid pick. But I think as a group, we could come up with two really great people that maybe didn't make the first cut.
Okay. So we don't wind up doing, you know, like the People's Court right now, doing something. Is it possible for you guys to ruminate over that for next week and then think about what those two categories would be? Assuming that we agree to the base five, you know, 1, 1, 1, 1. You come up with two categories of people that you think that would fill this out to try to reflect what Mark was saying. Could be, could be a town employee, could be, I think that's an excellent thought, too. An elderly individual who has financial constraints. Someone like that, but I'm not skewing it in any direction. If you could come back next week with some idea of what that extra two people would look like, then we could probably start, start a process, and we'll be done within a week or so.
If I could add, when you're done.
Yes.
Sure. If you remember from last week, we had a presentation from Gru White, and if we do move forward with a contract with that company or a different company, part of that proposal was to guide the select board in choosing a selection committee, in creating a charge, and really advising you on who should be on that and what that committee does. So you do have time to put this committee together, and if you hire someone, that is something they will guide you to do.
But I won't, not to disagree, but I will also argue that's a policy decision on our part. Whenever they say something that we'd have to consider, what direction we'd like to go. I'm not assuming they're gonna be that much different. I've been through several searches already. We're not talking in a dissimilar way. I'm just trying to figure out how they arrive populating the committee, which is different from what he was talking about last week, really. As opposed to just coming up with like nine names and then whittling it down to five by majority vote, which is another way of approaching it. So, yeah, but again, I'm not, I'm not assuming an action, but I, we have to rough out what this thing looks like, so that when we do pick the search firm that we're ready to go with them, and they can develop the charge that we're gonna use, because it isn't urgent in a certain way, because they're gonna have to go out and do the search. There isn't, there isn't going to be a need for them to meet 10 days to pick out people, if we all agree to that. So that's all I need out of this discussion. So next week, we'll have, you know, an additional discussion about what those two categories of people might be, and then we, by then, we might actually, I'm not even sure what we're gonna do tonight with the search firm, so. But it's something I'd like to be able to start the discussion with. Pete?
So along the lines of the screening committee, I, I came in leaning towards a five-member committee, with each of us having a selection. I understand where Mark's coming from, and I can appreciate it. But I'm not sure we're not going to have that accomplished just through our five. So I guess at this point, I'm happy to continue the discussion on whether or not we want to increase it to seven, but I'm not necessarily sold on sending it to seven people. So, you know, if after some further deliberation and discussions, that's the will of the board, then that's what we do. And so to your overall point, I'm fine processing or having an internal deliberation with myself on what those categories would look like, but I'm not yet sold that that's what we need.
Okay, fair enough.
And the only other thing I'll say that was brought up by the... And the only other thing I'll say that was brought up by the consultant during his presentation, and I actually liked it, was that the, this board would, would select the chair of that committee.
Yeah, I too thought that was a terrific idea. And so there are times when we have committees where the first person who walks in ends up becoming the chair.
And my only, my last comment, and I said this 20 years ago, and I'll piss people off again tonight, as I did 20 years ago. My preference when we solicit and bring names forward is that they're not, they're not the names of the individuals that we see volunteer on every committee and board in town. Back to the point of we want some diversity on this crew, we want different opinions, we want folks who potentially see things differently. And again, I'm not, I'm not knocking those that volunteer that time. We, we need them, we appreciate them, and I'm not excluding them. I'm just saying, we need to think outside of that, that realm of individual and potentially find some others that add real value. So I've done it. I pissed people off. Thank you.
I, I know the process. I've been there. All right, so we'll bring this back, but I just wanted to begin the discussion so that we have some start point. All right. This is another one of those things. Anytime we award the contract for the, just to review again what the process is for Brooks Academy. If we stay on time, it requires us to, A, put out a contract for a architectural firm that will then have to come up with a work statement that translates into whatever the architecture is that we want. But we also need the, a design selection committee in order for that to occur. Because that has to happen before we can go out to a general contractor to actually start the construction part of this. So everything has to wind up being in sequence properly. So that's where this fits in. Megan is, you've been working on the architect part of that, right?
So we have a request for proposals for design work that will be on the, on the streets as of Thursday this week. Those proposals...
Thank you, by the way.
Sure. Those proposals are due back on August 20th. And those are proposals from architects interested in doing the work, not the final product, not the final design. And per Mass General Law, a qualifications-based evaluation of those proposals from the architects is required in order for us to choose a designer, an engineer, or an architect who will be awarded a contract to provide us with a design. And a qualifications-based process requires a committee, and our designer selection policy requires the select board to approve of a selection committee. I have proposed five names on this selection committee. I'm not married to any of them, and honestly, I have not spoken to Duncan or Lynn about this and their availability for this committee. But I do recommend to have an odd number. Myself, Sean Libby, our facilities maintenance manager. I have recommended Duncan Berry, the chair of the planning board. One representative from our owners' project management team, who is RGB Architects. And then I have, and with conjunction with Sean, think that a member of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission should be on the designer selection committee. And again, I haven't spoken to Lynn. I think she's on, online. But we would be looking for this committee to meet after the 20th, to review the proposals, to go through a score sheet, to see who is advantageous, highly advantageous, or who does not meet the minimum qualifications, and be able to put together a recommendation of an award to the select board, who will then negotiate a fee. So then, as the process goes forward, hopefully, a contract will be awarded last week of August, first week of September. And then the work, the scope of work is about 120, 150 days from award of contract to a final design. So that's about, was that four months or so? Four, four months? And then we would be putting it out to bid for contractors. So we are looking at a, at about a year and a half for, from now until a final completed project. It's a little longer than we had wanted it to be, but our owners' project management team has suggested that we should give four to five months for an architect to provide us with a final design.
Well, I'm hoping you're wrong, but I will thank you for having put this together, because it's a good mix of the town internally and the users of the building. And Duncan, you have him listed as the chair of the planning board. We all know that he's really expert in the history of Harwich, so...
And it, it's not a vote on the final designs. It is just, it's a vote on the qualifications of the architect.
Okay. So open it up for discussion. Jeff?
I think it's great. Happy to make a motion if you'd like.
Oh, Lynn, you can't deny yourself the one.
Good evening. Anything you need me to do, I'm, I'm there.
Well, I think this is consistent with what we did do when we finally got things rolling, when Jeff and I were, because this has both the, the users of the building, it has a representation with the town side of things. So it is a good cross-section. Any other comments? Pete?
My only comment is, I'm glad Lynn was available tonight. But if Mr. Berry is not interested, are we voting on the five individuals? Because would that require us to come back if he chooses not to participate?
If he chooses not to, right, unless you wanted to name an alternate tonight, then if any one of them is unavailable, we can just put the alternate in instead.
I'm, I'm fine going with it. I just wanted to confirm that...
I'm pretty sure he will.
I wouldn't have an alternate to offer up, but if we want to move forward with this, and then if Duncan, for any reason, chooses not to, we can come back.
Well, we could always swap out somebody, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the Brooks Academy Museum Designer Selection Committee as presented in our packet.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to accept the recommendation from the acting town administrator for the design selection committee. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right. As we alluded to earlier, this discussion could have conceivably happened later, but I got some concerns, and Megan and I have talked about this. We have to, in order to do what we promised Town Meeting that we were gonna do and qualify for the intended use plan money and the county money, which I might point out is high watermark now, because that's not nearly available this year for new projects. So we really don't want to lose this. But we promised that we were going to ride in with that money available. That has to be done by June 30th, meaning the construction contract's let, and we made that commitment. There is the one issue, and I think it was kind of fuzzy the first phase years ago when that happened, is like, there are easements that have to be granted. Some are permanent, some are temporary. But there are two things going on here. If we do it now, we, because it has, it's a leaseholds kind of thing. It can't be done by us. Town Meeting has to approve easements. So we're either gonna be committing to a fall Town Meeting of some sort in order to get this thing rolling, or gamble that in May that we can put it all together in five weeks. So that's really what the comparative discussion should be, is like, what do we want to do? Because we have to have the easements. And it, it's nice that Megan's already identified that upfront, because that did happen initially a couple of Town Administrators ago.
So we, we will definitely need several temporary easements and at least one permanent easement for the sewer work in the Great Sand Lakes area. Our engineer has identified them, and we're, we're working with our DPW to identify the map and parcels and owners. We know we can get all of the paperwork in, in line and ready to go when once Town Meeting approves the easements, even if it's, if it's in May. We can still put things out to bid with ad alternates if we don't know for sure on May 6th or 7th next year if those easements have been approved or not. If for some reason, very unlikely, but if for some reason the one permanent easement that we need is not approved, it is on a, I believe it's Lakeside Terrace. It's one, one road where, where three parcels wouldn't get sewer-ing if we did not get that one easement. Which means it's three, three houses that would, would lose out on sewer-ing if we didn't get the easement. The engineer and, the engineer has advised us that they do believe we can get this done in six weeks after following a Town Meeting, so we can get a contract signed by June 30th. So they said it would be great to have a fall Town Meeting to get this buttoned up in advance, but if we don't, it's not detrimental to the project.
The only addendum I'd add to that is that should something quirky happen in this Town Meeting, we still have the other one to fall back on to resolve that. All the eggs will be in the May basket if we say that we're gonna defer to May. I, I have no preference. I'm somewhat risk averse. That's why I was saying maybe we'd want to do it earlier rather than later, just so we know we've got that done. It has to happen one way or the other, is my point. But the implication is, we'd also have to decide that we are seriously interested in entertaining a fall Town Meeting, and that probably should not be. Everybody knows how I feel about some of these. If they're scheduled for, they're really, to be really late, you might as well just hold the Christmas Eve and make sure that nobody comes.
So move.
Yeah, thanks. But it probably should be done like later October, so that it still has some relevance. But the question is, we haven't actually run this by Emily either.
So I'll go the path I usually go. Fall Town Meeting costs money. If we have other matters before us, I'm all for it. If we, if the likelihood of easements was, was going to be substantial, then I would say press forward. But if we're looking for one permanent easement, and the rest are temporary, I don't foresee a huge lift there, especially to Megan's point, they could put in, you know, some, some ad alternates or whatever. So I would need to understand what other items we'd want to put onto a fall meeting agenda before I would agree to spending that money.
And there actually isn't anything contemplated, so that's the flip side of this thing. But the discussion has to be concluded sometime in the last week of August, because you need 45 days to come up with a Town Meeting.
Right. So last week, and identify some other topics that are, you know...
Our drop dead date is next month.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, again, we can wait on this and just see if anything develops into... But that's the timeframe. If we want to stay on time, we have to do something and... All right. So Pete, the Veterans Agent, what's up?
Yeah, appreciate that.
This, this will explain exactly how the process works, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm less concerned with the process right now.
And who's occupying.
Yeah, truly, it, you know, and it was rumor, and we all know how rumors are, but I, I was told that potentially our agent was retiring. And so I don't know if we have any information on that.
I do know we have Mr. Quilty from, the Director of Veterans Services is here if you want some specific answers.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Appreciate him being there.
Wherever you feel more comfortable, a podium or sitting, it doesn't matter.
Thank you. I'm not sure, I know that's one of the topics. Thank you. I'm Greg Quilty. I'm, technically, I'm Harwich's Veterans Agent.
Okay.
And I am the agent in each town. So that, that's what's required in a Veterans District, that the director be the agent. And our VSOs obviously serve all the towns, and we geographically disperse them. Not permanently, per se, but we do try to keep them steady so that there's some consistency, obviously, with the veterans. So I'm not sure exactly, just like when we had Will Remillard retire prior to Shawnee. So I'm not sure the scope you want me to talk about, but I'll talk about anything veteran-related.
Well, I know Pete can speak for himself, but I think he was, he looked at the Mass General Law, and it did say that we have the ability, that we may elect to appoint, I believe is in the sentence.
That, yes. I, I only found out about this yesterday. A veteran contacted me. So I called the town today. So I wasn't aware of tonight. So I was not prepared, per se, and didn't know, like I said, the scope of what you wanted to talk about. I have spoken in front of many tempors at Selectmen on different topics, specifically, usually, just the budgets and the state of the veterans within their town. But that Section 3, I believe, was included in your packet tonight. And that speaks to towns that mainly have their own sole Veterans Services Department and aren't part of a district. So Sections 10, 11, and 14, I believe, are what speak to districts, which Harwich has always been a part of, at least in the last 20 years or so. And so in that, I am hired by the Veterans District Board, which is made up of each Town Manager in the towns. And they hire me, and I hire my staff. And so, just like many of your other departments. So we do have a replacement coming September 1st. In the meantime, I've been in Harwich myself for, I think I've been there four days out of the last four weeks. And I've had Guy Garchak, my other VSO, he's there. He's there tomorrow. He was there last week. So we've been covering the office, not at the full extent that Shawnee was here, because we're shorthanded right now. But there's usually a seamless, now, the veterans do get a little concerned when the person they're dealing with is no longer there. That happens. And Shawnee is, has some shoes that are gonna be big to fill, because she's a wonderful VSO. So we hate losing her, but I think the grandkids won out this time. So we are fortunate. We have a Veterans Services, an experienced Veterans Services person, not a VSO, but a person working in Veterans Services, a female veteran that is going to, that has agreed just last Friday to take the position. Shawnee was the Assistant Director, so she served other towns as well, not just Harwich. She was manning our Province Town Office and going out to Truro and Eastham to do time in the community centers there, just as we do in some other community centers. Not, we're not in every town, because we are the largest Veterans District by population served. We have more veterans than the city of Boston. We cover 400 square miles with four Veterans Services Officers. And, and just like every other department, our 22,000 to 26,000 veteran population, not counting dependents, swells up in the summer months as well. And that means our federal claims swell up as well. Because we do a lot of that. We do thousands and thousands of VA disability claims, which don't pass through the town, like your Chapter 115 benefits that I know you're all familiar with, and, and what Massachusetts does that no other state does. We currently give out about $8,000 in Chapter 115 benefits to Harwich residents every month. Those checks range from anywhere from $300 roughly up to $1,300 per month they get that. And in terms of VA claims within the town of Harwich, last year, we had, I think it was five, no, 260 recipients that received $4.6 million in veteran disability benefits, tax-free, that go back into your community. And whenever we can get those benefits, that takes them off the Chapter 115 rolls often, and lowers the town's cost, in essence. So that work is very important to all the towns, and that's what goes on behind the scenes. And we can do that. I don't, our VSOs are interchangeable, in a sense. We have systems that have been put in place since I got there. We have a federal software system that helps us with our VA disability claims, and a state system that we do the Chapter 115 claims. And our case notes are viewable by our other service officers. So if Guy does something in your office in Harwich tomorrow, and I'm here next Tuesday, I get to see what he did if that veteran comes in. So as we say in all of our towns, whether they have our presence in a community center or not, whenever a veteran... or not, whenever a veteran calls a town, we should get that call, the call should be referred to us, and we're still doing home visits. I did one three weeks ago here in Harwich, in the evening, to an 80-plus-year-old widow to get her started on applying for benefits. So we still do that, and none of that has changed, and it will not change. So if they call our office, the main office especially, it's easy for us to say, what town are you from, and we'll arrange to take care of them. So there should be no disruption of benefits in any way, that way. But it will take some of the veterans that are used to seeing the same person all the time, they are going to have to learn that there's going to be some new faces that way.
If I could, Mr. Chair, so, and I appreciate that explanation in the background, tremendous. And I appreciate what you folks do for our veterans. I certainly was not asking the status of our agent or officer to make a change. I simply wanted to know that we had coverage.
That's okay.
We certainly do. And so, again, I greatly appreciate it. The only thing I'll ask you then, is if there is an individual that's interested in working for you...
Yes.
How do they do that?
Well, we advertise a position, we're bound to advertise a position, obviously, and it was advertised in the Cape Cod Times and then on Indeed.
Okay.
So it was posted. So that's how we get our candidates. Obviously, as we learned, the veteran community is, while it's large in terms of comparatively to other towns and districts in the Commonwealth, it's a small community in terms of word getting around. And whenever one of us is leaving, or coming, or they think we're leaving, we also get applicants that way as well. And we interface with so many other agencies. I sit on the Regional Council on Homelessness, I'm on the State Executive Board. We have monthly meetings with all of our social workers that, with all the community police officers every month, to deal with and talk about any veterans that might be interfacing with them. And we have those meetings every month as well with all the police officers from across the Cape. And word gets around when there might be a vacancy, so to speak. So it's, I think normally, just the way any other job is posted.
Okay, excellent. Again, I appreciate you coming in tonight, certainly not looking to waste your time, but really just wanted to know...
Definitely not a waste of time, no. I was over here, within the past year, Board of Assessors called me over to talk about the Hero Act, and I know you folks have dealt with that here in a positive way for our veterans, and we appreciate it. But I can answer any questions about the budgets as well, and anyone else, any other questions that you have. And we get a call, we'll come to any meeting that you want us to come and discuss anything about veterans population.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think the only important issue was, do we have one? Do we have a plan to continue to have one?
You always have one. The beauty of a district is, is that we have that central office, and that's open five days a week. If they want to drive the 13 or 15 miles, we have five-day-a-week coverage in Hyannis, always, for any Harwich veteran, or any veteran across the Cape.
And since you have that connection, express our gratitude to Shawnee for all the work she's done through the years.
She's a very special VSO, and we're really sad to lose her.
But express our appreciation specifically.
I will, I will. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. I'm just going to flip these, because the first, if we do that, the first one's pretty fast. The vote relating to the Finance Director was there, because the agenda had to be put together and posted, but we are no longer engaged in the conversation with the candidate that we were engaged with, and the necessity probably exists for us to go back out and search for other candidates for the Finance Director. Megan and I have had a discussion about putting together an RFP for that previous to this meeting, so is that what we want to do?
I'm happy to speak. The Finance Director role is so critical to where we're going, that we need to make it a priority, we need to find the right candidate, and I absolutely would support, or I would entertain, I should say, soliciting a search firm to find a slew of candidates for us to fill this role.
Do we think this is going to be of a magnitude that, I mean, I'm trying to recall, I don't think that the last one we hired was done through an RFP, was she?
It was not, it was less than $10,000. If we are looking at $10,000 or less, we don't need to solicit quotes, we can use best management practices. I can solicit quotes through an email and not through a formal process. Seeing what the quote was for an executive recruitment service for the town administrator, I would imagine it would be around the same quote, around the same price. If you wanted to reduce the scope, where there isn't a selection committee, or there isn't a review committee, that would take a step out, which would reduce the price. And the Collins Center also does this, whatever the price is, does not require a contract, it's an intermunicipal agreement.
I believe Gru also has the ability to do this kind of work.
They do, yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, what I'll say then, off of Megan's comments, I'm happy to reduce the scope in the sense of no search committee or whatnot, or screening committee, and see if we can get the number lower, and perhaps, you know, through your email outreach, and if they're telling you that it's going to be 11, 12 grand, then we have to put it out the bid.
Sure. One thing that we will need for any search firm is the salary range, what you want for a job description, or are there any changes to the job description or the salary range that we had previously? Aside from that, the whole recruitment package is prepared already, we just need to go back out and do it again.
Just a thought, why don't we roll with what we did, and if we wanted to modify the price, because the truth is, if we put in a dollar figure, we're going to cap out, and we will not be getting people who might have been interested, but at a higher level.
Salary.
Because that's what's going to happen.
You're talking salary, or for...
Yeah. So...
Mark, go ahead, sorry, Mark.
Sorry, Pete, I imagine you've already thought this, can you piggyback with Groh White? In other words, he's already doing a search for us, just ask him if he could take that on, and second question...
That's a scope change, it's not possible.
It would be, it would be a separate contract, and I would solicit a quote from him, plus the others that I sent it out to. It just wouldn't be a formal request for quotes with a deadline, it would be, it would be more informal.
And it's probably not possible, but Groh White said if their candidates didn't work out, they had placed them, they didn't work out, they would do another search for free? Anything like that with our search firm who did the search for the Finance Director?
That was a different type of search firm. That person was hired more for the development of a job description and advertising it in places, rather than the full-on outreach that Gru White has expressed that he does. Networking is something that I think you'll get a lot more of from a search firm, rather than that individual who did it previously.
If someone wants to make a motion to empower Megan to at least start the process, to go out, because it could be informal if it's 10 grand or less, but we won't know that until she starts.
I didn't know Jeff had a question, I saw him.
I'm noodling on this question, trying to, in discussions with other candidates, a certain part of a job description kept coming up. And I don't know if we want to have a discussion at the board level about how we want this job to look, potentially like some remote work, or, you know, those, that was part of how we were working through the process with the other two. And I'm not, you know, as I sit here, I don't want to send the same thing out that we sent out, because we had enough discussion to make me feel like that had some holes in it.
It would not preclude us for starting to have that conversation next week about a policy relating to remote work, and what the parameters would be that we would accept, because Pete correctly identified, we had no policy, so it was a discussion that was happening in a vacuum with these candidates. You know, to the extent they were asking, we had no policy. We'd be making it up.
That's kind of my point, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
So I think to Jeff's point, and right now, we're looking to solicit a firm to do the search, so we have a little bit of time to put a couple of those thoughts together, because I agree, as Megan alluded to, you know, we need to decide on salary, perhaps, you know, through our discussions, we learned that it might be a little low for the candidate that we're looking for. Remote work could be another thing, some of the other benefits that were discussed, that we may want to iron out before we finalize the agreement with our consultant. But we can at least get the information from our consultants.
And it's exactly where I was going with it, I think these two things can...
If we want to instruct her to actually start the process, I can guarantee it'll be on the agenda next week to have that follow-up.
These two things can happen in tandem.
Yeah.
Great.
So that's kind of where I'm at, is like, this will be on the agenda, because we're going to talk about it tomorrow, and it will be on the agenda, but we need to empower her to do something.
So I'll make a motion to ask the acting town administrator to solicit search consultants to secure a Finance Director for the town of Harwich, using...
Methodology that's consistent with...
Best management practices.
30B. Well, you also probably want to mention 30B, because there are different triggers that she has to follow, depending on what the magnitude is.
Best management practice without the need of 30B, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with 30B.
With 30B.
That'll leave it up to her discretion about the methodology.
Beautiful.
We hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Again, it'll be on the agenda again next week, so give some thought to that, what that other part would look like. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, could I ask, can we get what we had last time to forward it out to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're back to the Montmore Regional School Committee letter. You got it in your packet. Pete, you want to lead off on this, or do you... I could give an overview, which is something beyond the letter. There's been a lot of heat, not so much light, in this discussion over the past few years. The real urgent need for this, regardless of how we approach it, is we're heading where the percentage of the school budget, it represents such a large portion of our tax receipts, that there's a legitimate concern that it's going to impact not just the town of Harwich, but the operation of the Montmore School District in terms of what's available for funding without an override. So however we want to have that discussion, and to make that point is fine, there are different ways of doing it, and this is obviously one of them, so you want to put that forward?
Well, what I'll say is, I really don't have an issue with the letter. I understand that there's different thought processes and opinions, but ultimately, in my belief, the school board is where this belongs right now. The school board has the ability to open this agreement at any time that they see fit, with, again, whatever the percentage vote is, I forget now. And I think I said the same thing last week, I don't recall what the percentage is, but...
It's changing every year.
The important piece is, they have the ability to do it, and it's going to help us understand, as well as the folks in Chatham, where the school board, the elected officials who run our school district stand on this matter. And I think that's an important piece to this equation, because clearly, even if we were to engage the Select Board in Chatham, as we did previously, we had no idea where the Select, where the school board or school committee sat on this matter. So to have a better understanding of where they stand, where they have the ability to open this thing up with a simple vote, there's no reason not to ask them to do this, and if they choose not to, then we can try another method. I think I understand where our odds are, if the school board decides not to do this, but nonetheless, we have other options available to us. And maybe at the end, you know, as we talked about, you know, a few, well, I guess, I've only been back a little over a year, maybe a year ago, you know, we, as a board, could also bring it to our town meeting with essentially a non-binding referendum, asking the voters of Harwich what they feel is the best practice. So anyway, I think the best route right now, is as I stated last week, is to ask the school board to open up the agreement in its entirety with special focus on the funding formula, and as much as we need to provide them with detailed information, I don't think that is necessary to get it off the ground.
Okay. As luck would have it, Meredith happens to be here tonight, but I also understand that you're kicking off a session on Thursday to do precisely that kind of strategic planning with the name, not necessarily to go over the agreement, but I will point out that we're coming up on the five-year period anyway. So if you want to come up, give us your insight about this, be helpful.
Hi, Meredith Henderson, the Chair of the Montmore School Committee. I can't give you a whole lot of insight, and I can't speak for the whole board, but as Chair, one of my personal goals this year is to really bring this to light. I think that the Harwich Select Board and the school committee need to be transparent in their communication around this regional agreement. We've watched over the last few years, or several years, how it's really affecting our town, and we have to have that conversation with Chatham. But everyone needs to be able to understand what the regional agreement is, how it came to be, what the assessment formulas are. And so, as Chair, I spoke with the administration and my Vice Chair, and the first thing that we're going to do, we always have a workshop in the summer, and our first agenda item for our workshop is to really dig into the regional agreement, understand how our two towns came to be together, how the assessment formulas are calculated, what does our town look like as far as our census goes, how does that affect our foundation enrollment, and help the veteran members of our committee, as well as the brand-new members of our committee, to kind of be on the same page as this. And then, hopefully, I'm also the liaison to the Select Board this year, so I hope to continue that communication with this board, so that as we move into our budget season and your budget season, everyone is, you know, on the same page, and there's transparency across the board, so that there's no surprises like last year. So although I can't speak for the whole committee, whether or not, you know, how we'll react to this letter, I believe that most of the members on our committee believe we need to have this conversation, and we need to all be on the same page, so that we can bring that to Chatham.
And we recognize that it can't be a resolution now, but you also should recognize, as you look at the calendar, that we are not doing what we did for several years in a row, where we got to the point where it was January or February, and said, gosh, we should have spoken about this in the summer.
I know, I love that.
Here we are. The biggest point, regardless of what happens, that we'd like to be able to make, and again, there's been a lot more heat than there has been light here. This is not us whining about, well, this isn't fair. Within the context of our town budget, I mean, we've got eight contracts that we're trying to renegotiate with unions, we're about 90-something percent of our levy limit, this is really, it starts with us.
Right.
But since we are the overwhelming majority of the funding source, it will have an impact someday, not just the school, the regional school, but on the quality of what they're able to be able to give, because I can see the possibility of sequential overrides, and we don't want to get to that point. The kids would wind up being hostages, so it really isn't as hostile as, we shouldn't be paying as much as that, it's more like, what's sustainable?
Right.
How can we do this so that we can move forward together with the same quality school without bankrupting everybody?
Right. And I think that the changes that we made in 2022 did help the situation. I think that we would be in a very different place right now if that hadn't changed, if that language hadn't changed, and some of the parameters of the regional agreement hadn't changed. But I think we still have to continue to have this conversation. But I think we still have to continue to have this conversation and make sure that we can do the best for the students. Because like you said, if this doesn't change, then there's going to be some negative impact, right? And the negative impact affects not only the Harwich students, but also the Chatham students. So it's-
That's the message you want to get across. I don't want this to come across as hostile. Let's start this over again as if we're just starting. The letter would be a good start point. It gets you to the point where you have the school committee involved right away. You're at the point where you're examining things also.
Yes.
Which is the appropriate point, instead of halfway through your budget cycle.
Exactly.
So that's all we're looking for right now, is an open, honest discussion, and they shouldn't read into this, you know, anything other than that. This is the right moment, because it's early enough for having that discussion. And there is some urgency overall, because we're finding ourselves really stuck with even resolving union contracts, and that's not going to get better.
Yeah. No, and we're going to go into our negotiations in one more year, so then that's going to be another-
Which is on top of the fact that we still don't have contracts for eight of our unions.
Right.
So we got the letter here. The question is, is that where we want to start?
Oh, I think Mark has something.
If I could?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
This is just a thought I had, and all deference to the school committee and to you, Pete. I do think the place for this discussion, for the agreement, should be with the town select boards. And the reason that is, is that this is primarily a financial, a financial goal rather than an educational thing, and I think it would be more appropriate under the purview of the Select Board versus the School Committee. There have been suggestions of an ad hoc committee, which would be by the both boards, that agree in the people, probably people who have a financial background. And what they would do is produce a viable option for the financial viability of the schools. You know, I've done some research in this, and it's very complex. The concepts of equalized valuation, population is a new one for you, combined effort yield, which is in a recent agreement, all are very complex. And I think we need an expertise that an ad hoc committee could provide to get us through this. If I could, one more thing, Mr. Chair, just to paraphrase some of the comments I heard from the community in anticipation of this. Let's leave the select boards and school committees out for now, bring in people who can be fully objective, with the purpose of coming up with a fair recommendation for consideration. The ad hoc committee can always call in the experts, whether it's the superintendent, the town manager administrator, the finance business DSE, Mass. Association of School Committees, to better understand the predicament of what options they might have to make fair adjustments. Otherwise, the way we're going doesn't allow for fair and due process. You know, we're currently pitting two select boards against each other and putting the school committee in the middle. So basically, the point I want to make, an ad hoc committee of, from both towns, probably people who have financial backgrounds or finance committee. I know Mr. McMillan said he would be happy to provide some of the scenarios we come up with and put it on paper. So I just throw that out as something to consider. Because, you know, the school committee, yes, you do deal with finances, but you're probably, most importantly, concerned about the education of the kids and educational policy, so-
And ultimately, it is the Select Board's-
It is the Select Board, and we can kind of move it along a little bit faster by getting it in their hands, and maybe, I don't know if we need to make it, how we get them the data to say, we do need to deal with this, or if they finally get the message that, let's get going on this, let's appoint an ad hoc committee. And we can really get moving on it a lot faster than, you know, I anticipate the scenario we're talking now could get us into the spring. We can move on it a lot faster, I think, with that ad hoc committee. Thanks.
And we can be your partners along the way.
Yes, of course, yeah.
I don't want to leave that at that, in quite that way. I don't believe that the Chatham Select Board has not been listening, so I would rather ratchet that back. I'm not sure that we've given them a compelling argument for them to be able to wrap their heads around that, why that matters to them. Because, I'll be honest, I mean, if we were all serving on the Select Board in Chatham, we'd be defending our turf, saying, we're not going to pay more, you guys agreed to this. The question is, what's changed since we started? We made some suppositions, but we also had a starting point where we had a school system of our own, and what it occupied within the confines of our tax structure was a much smaller place than where we're at now, which is why this is going to careen into a problem that both towns are going to experience at some point. Because we are the overwhelming funder, and if we wind up having problems with it, there's no way that Chatham's going to just fill in the gap and run the system. So we're in this situation together.
Correct.
And we need to come up with a solution together. So I don't care where it starts, but I would disagree to a certain degree, because the school agreement has to be reviewed every five years anyway, and the language is in the school agreement, and the school agreement is your agreement. So generally, we ask for advice from people who actually are proficient in the area that we're talking about, which gets me back to, I don't know that the letter is a bad start point. It may not be the be-all and end-all, and it may not be where we go, but I mean, you certainly can't do, Mark, what you were discussing, without a discussion with Dean DeCastro, me saying, is it something that we, you would want to talk about to set up a special committee of some sort?
It would have to be a conversation in Chatham, for sure.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't even know that we're talking about this. So it's important to have more communication, and Dean and I have talked once already. So I want to keep it that way, in civil, fact-based.
That would be great.
So we have the letter. I'm looping back to that. We have the letter. Do you want to use the letter? If you don't, then, again, there's no voted position on a Chatham board that would be able to reciprocate this. I'd have to go and see if that's something they're even willing to discuss.
So the purpose of the letter isn't to tell Chatham, this is how things are going. The purpose of the letter is to reopen the agreement. If we don't get the agreement reopened, there is no subcommittee, there's no anybody. The agreement needs to get open so that a discussion can take place. Whether there's a group of specialists brought together, quite honestly, I don't know that there needs to be external people. I think the towns have the right people employed. You know, we have town administrators, town managers, we have school superintendent, finance directors in the school, school committee members who can clearly ask them to participate, select boards that can ask town employees to participate, again, town administrator, finance directors, things of that nature. So I don't know that we need to go outside and bring in these so-called experts, when we have experts that actually do this job every day. And I'm not presupposing what the solution is. What I know is that the discussion needs to happen, otherwise, we will be in a situation down the road, and we don't have the details yet as to what that date is, whether it's a year, two, three, four. I don't know what it is yet. But what we know is that's the direction this train is heading. And so unless we can get the agreement open and have an open discussion, an honest discussion between each community, then there's no, there's nothing else to do. The agreement has to get open, and the easiest, fairest way for it to get open is through the school board, because they have the authority to do it by a simple vote of their committee members.
And I might also point out that we haven't actually looked at the entire terrain. I know you've made some comments, Pete, over the last year even, where some of the solution doesn't have anything to do with the formula particularly, it has to do with how we handle capital assets, which is another approach to take in terms of, how can we get some relief out of this? Who pays for what in the buildings and how much, independent of the funding formula for the operations of the school? There's a lot of ground that could be covered.
As we said, whenever we had, back in April, whenever we had a meeting with the Chatham Select Board, there are a variety, a vast number of ways in which it could be modified. I'm not trying to dictate the way it's going to be modified. I'm just saying, there's options available, let's have the discussion as a group, let's have the experts bring facts to the table, and we go from there.
And whatever we do, I would like to start now, because my promise was that we would not let this fall occur without this discussion occurring. We're here now. So love to be able to take at least an initial action.
So I'll, go ahead.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to give you a buzzer.
Yeah. I'll agree, there needs to be an acknowledgement that the agreement has been reopened. I think that's first and foremost. And I think the school committee has that ability that I don't believe anyone else really does have. No other boards or committees has the opportunity, the ability, to acknowledge an opening, reopening of that agreement. So I believe that's a good place to begin. Definitely want to make sure that the overarching theme is, we're not losing, I don't want to lose the importance of education for our students while we're doing this process. I think this can happen together. Continue to give the quality instruction to our students while we're going through this process of trying to figure out and look at, and do a true data discovery, right? Because I don't really have the information, I don't really understand the data. I think I have enough information probably to be a little dangerous, but I don't have the data, and I'm not going to be the ones, and I'm not going to be the one to do all of the discovery. To Mark's point, which I respect about a committee, I think that would confuse things. I don't think we need more committees right now, or ad hoc committees. I think that there are, the right people are in place right now, to Pete's point. I think the school committee superintendent, Michael McMillan. My chief concern is how this select board is going to interface and interact with the school committee during this whole process. So that we're not getting in, and this is no, this is, I'm not forecasting anything here. And I'm the liaison now, as I asked to be. So everybody has my word that I'm going to be two feet in all the way. But I think it's extremely important that we are giving information back and forth in real time, so that the runway doesn't get so short that it's, well, we missed it again, and, you know, we're going to push it off another year. That's why I was harping on getting this going back in May. So how the Select Board is involved, you all have information we don't have. We have information that you don't have. The only possible way for a good outcome is if we communicate.
Correct.
And you know what our issues are, and we know what the issues are from the school committee, and to provide that education to the kids. And I'm all in, if that's the way we're going to go with this, but if it's kind of disjointed, I'm going to have something to say about that going forward. That's where I sit with this.
And you have my promise to handle this in exactly the same way we're handling four or five other critical projects, where there needs to be some milestones, where we get back to talk to each other, and we don't just leave it open-ended, where it's like, well, come back to us before Christmas and then we'll have a conversation. It shouldn't be that. So what I'm hoping for is, we get a vote for the letter, we sign the letter, it gets there before Thursday so that you can have it with you, and then we see from that point, if you have something to report back about what kind of action the committee was looking at, whether it was on that agenda or a future agenda, but we're going to make some commitments on time. Because I think that's been the biggest problem we've had in all of this, throughout the last five to 10 years, is being able to time this so that it doesn't wind up looking like we're trying to hold up Harwich, Harwich or Chatham, their town meetings. This is something that, it can't be a surprise, it can't be a gotcha, it's got to be something that's well-thought-out. And again, it's got to be something where the folks in Chatham understand that the downside will affect them also, not just us. That's what I'm looking for, is a real, honest discussion mode. Where are we going here? And how sustainable is this, and for how long? And if that discussion occurs, it would be worthwhile, but we got to start. We got to, at least, I think the letter probably should. You did want to make that motion.
No motion, yeah, but I need to add.
The only, the only thing that I was going to say is, I think what I'm hearing across the board, and I'm new to this board, but I think what we need to do is start first steps first, and that's giving you the letter, saying that this is what we're interested in doing, and then growing from there. That's my opinion.
Now, I had thought it would have been more impactful to have five signature lines, but knowing now that you've got this meeting on Thursday, you may want to have that done so that you authorize the Chair to sign.
Yeah.
Or we could do it right this second.
Mr. Chair?
Since you also have the signature paper right here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to accept and authorize the Select Board to sign the Montemoy Regional School Committee Letter pertaining to the regional agreement as written in tonight's packet.
I'll second.
Many seconds. Stick around, we might have something for you to take home with you.
Oh.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Meredith, I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Charles, you shouldn't have talked so much.
I had my hand up.
Your value is probably going to be increasing as we go along here, because as Anita said, first steps first, we got to get going here.
I wanted to make, with regard to a slight edit to this letter in relation to the remarks you would be speaking about.
I think that the train just moved out of the station. I apologize.
I'll email it to her tomorrow.
Speaking of the Gru White people.
In your packet, Mr. Chair, you have a contract for consideration for executive service firm, executive search firm services from Gru White Consulting LLC in the amount of Mr. White is online, as well as being here last week to give you a presentation on the approach of his firm, and tonight, for your consideration, is executing that contract.
Okay. Who wants to start?
Mr. Chair?
Pete?
I didn't realize Mr. White was with us this evening, I would have asked to take this sooner, but I have no problems with the contract presented by Gru White for recruitment of a town administrator. However, based on conversations last week and a little bit this week, I'd almost like to kick it down the road a meeting or two, so that we can have a discussion on some of those particulars, whether it's salary range, whether it's previous experience, other experiences, whether, you know, wastewater projects, things of that nature, that we haven't had. And maybe, maybe Mr. White doesn't care if we execute a contract and then wait a few weeks to get him details, but what I don't want is essentially for a clock to start, and then we're feeling pressured to make some decisions if we're not in total agreement on what some of these things would look like. You know, back to some of the things that Mr. Handler stated last week, you know, it would be nice for us to outline, you know, what the expectations are, what the salary range looks like, and some of the skill sets that we're looking to secure through this process.
Okay, so as luck would have it, Mr. White's on the board right now. I guess that's the question, is, would the clock start tonight if we awarded tonight?
So I know that's his, in the center there, W.
I kind of thought that.
He may be here.
That's Richard's way stack, right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, all right, well, then he's not here at all.
I have my glasses on.
Richard can answer if he'd like.
I didn't have my glasses on.
Good, I'll pass. Thank you, Richard.
Richard, you don't have an opinion then? Okay.
But in the proposal is the approach to recruitment, and one of the first part is a consult, consultation with the Select Board, with Mr. White or one of his associates to go over what your vision is for the next town administrator.
Yeah, I think what Pete is saying, that time is money, and would starting now- Yeah, I think, I think what Pete is saying, that time is money, and would starting now be tangibly different than if we waited two weeks, in terms of what their expectation about the magnitude of the contract is?
I, I can absolutely ask that question of him tomorrow. I don't believe it will considerably change the price, if at all. I think it will just push the timeline out a couple more weeks.
You want to wait for that conversation?
I'm fine with that. The only, the only thing I don't want us to do is be in a situation where we're trying to rush through with some decisions if we can't, you know, come to a consensus on what we're looking for when, you know, when it comes to certain aspects of the next hire. So, pleasure of the board, but that's where I stand. I, I don't want, and again, I think Mr. Mr. White will be more than, you know, agreeable and flexible with his schedule, I just don't want us to put ourselves in a pickle that we're trying to make bad, make good decisions and end up making bad decisions.
All right, okay.
Happy to hear from the others.
We bring this back next week then, and have the conversation?
Bring it back next week, but I'd like us to get our points forward so we don't delay beyond that point.
Yep. Start thinking about what it is that we're looking for in the town administrator, so we can have, convey that to them. All right, we'll bring it back.
Next week.
Okay.
The next contract you have in your packet is a 2025 Community Preservation Act Agreement with the Harwich Conservation Trust for the Cape Cod Rail Trail Land Preservation Project in the amount of $500,000. This was approved at the annual town meeting in May.
And it's something we've done with the Conservation Trust in the past with CPC grants?
We have done grants for non-governmental agencies. So this grant is with the Harwich Conservation Trust. There are two other agencies that the CPC awarded money to, to, through town meeting, and those two agreements should be before you next week. But any Community Preservation Act funds for town projects do not have an agreement. They're just...
So cutting to the chase, your recommendation is?
To approve the agreement, to sign the agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the 2025 Community Preservation Act Agreement with the Harwich Conservation Trust for the Cape Cod Rail Trail Land Preservation Project in the amount of $500,000 is approved by Harwich Annual Town Act.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Town administrators report.
I'm sending around for signatures the appointments from last week for the Housing Committee, as well as Council on Aging and Cultural Council, that just didn't get signed last week. And Town Administrators Report.
Yeah.
In your packet is a contract with the Visiting Nurses Association through, through the year 20, the fiscal year 26. It is for $8,000, not to exceed $8,000. It is an increase from last year, but their, their services have expanded, and they came very close to meeting, meeting $6,000 this year, needing a reserve fund transfer. So we have increased it to 8,000, and that was executed. And that is, that's it for Town Administrators Report.
Okay, something on my agenda. It's over here. Yeah, there you go. All right, Select Board member reports. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple things I'd like to request. An update on the Walder Road stairs, where does that sit? Dan Pelletier, I haven't heard much regarding how we're utilizing him. I'd also like to have any updates as to if he's doing anything, and an accounting update to date. And then I had asked for the housing trust, Housing Trust conversation to be put on the agenda at some point. I'll just make that known now.
We did have that discussion two weeks ago. We're kind of, I've been rolling through five different towns and see the different flavors that are out there, the types of trust agreements, because ours is kind of an outlier. And you, in order for this to be, to be modified, both this board and the Housing Trust have to agree to a change.
That's what I want to have a discussion.
No, no, I get that, but like I said, we, we weren't prepared, so, but it's been a discussion, and it will be, it will be on an agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Mark?
You know, I just read yesterday's Cape Cod Times, sorry, Bill. I don't keep that correct. But anyways, they did mention of a, a program, an incentive payments to property owners who rent their housing units to year-round residents.
That's the Providence Town?
Versus, this is in Providence Town, Antucket has done it. What it does is, it unlocks existing homes for local needs. I've always heard the problem is, we don't have a housing, we have a housing program, we have a housing occupancy program. So just something to keep in mind, it seems to be, you know, Airbnbs, you have to have a cleaning company, you have weekly turnovers, there is probably some incentive from the town to give, but you can turn some of these units into year-round rentals for town residents, so. And I'd be happy if you want a copy, we'll provide it to you. There is a firm that oversees it called Placemate, lease to locals, so, thank you.
If we're going to do that, we're going to make sure that Brianna's part of that discussion. Well, Amita?
No, I don't really have anything. Thank you.
Pete?
I meant to bring it up at the end of last week's meeting, so I don't have my notes with me, but when, when both chiefs were before us talking about the July 4th events in Harwich Port, one of the things that Chief LeBlanc alluded to was the town having some, some skin in the game when it comes to...
Oh, yeah.
Policing the streets, and I don't mean law enforcement policing. And, and what I, what I'm wondering is if, if a debrief with department heads has occurred, or if there's a plan to have a debrief with department heads regarding, because I think Chief mentioned, you know, bringing Highway to the table, and maybe a few other people to have a larger conversation. And if, if it's not, I think it would be a wise move to, to conduct such a debrief and potentially get an update to this board if there's any recommendations on things that we can do to, to help support activities down there and/or improve the overall outcome from what, what, you know, was reported to us regarding trash and other less desirable items.
And Megan and I have had that discussion also, about trying to get DPW together with police and fire to have a discussion about where they fit in, but certainly there was a lot of trash, too. And I understand that people who are power walkers in the morning were probably quite disturbed at seeing what they saw. But our job is to make sure that they don't.
Correct.
Oh, but, and I will give a report. Mr. Handler was out there with me. It was the Cape Verdean Festival, the 7th and 11th, it was a terrific time. Appreciated everybody being there, and...
Great time?
Yep. And that's all from me, so accept a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine o'clock.